We'll start the meeting. It's 7:01 and we are recording the meeting. This is the Board of Selectmen's special meeting. And I thank you all for coming. I know that Erica Moser is here from the day. Thank you for covering our quaint little town. Appreciate that, Erica. We initially asked, and we will keep to that promise, we asked Senator Farmica and State Rep Holly Cheeseman to come and update us on the legislative session and tell us what's going on and what to watch for, and very specifically how we could help you, you know, or help our town, help our citizens during this session if it's, if you need, if you need help. So I don't know who's gonna go first, probably the senator.
No, is Holly on?
Yes, Holly made it.
I just jumped over from the public hearing.
I defer to your schedule, Holly. You're more important to the public hearing.
Absolutely not. You're the senator. You outrank me.
As the ranking member of Finance from the House, you need to be on that more than I do as a mayor.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think it's gonna go into a bit more depth in terms of what the town can do with regard to the funds that are coming to you from the American Recovery Plan, which is gonna be a significant chunk of change. And I think what he's obviously gonna make clear is that, you know, you can't use, the things you really can't do is, you know, use them, for tax cuts and things like that. So, anyway, I'll just touch briefly on some of the bills that are going through Finance. And actually, today, the public hearing that's going on that started at 10:00 this morning, and we're on Speaker number 85, so I'm gonna be here for a while, is focused on the Governor's Bonding Bill, the Governor's Budget going forward. Some, we had Mark Bouton in from Department of Revenue Services talking about some of their initiatives. And the bill that's getting the most testimony is House Chair Sean Scamlin's bill that would create a Connecticut child tax credit, I think available to households making up to $210,000. It's phased in over four years and would cost the state in the region of $450 million if fully implemented. A worthy goal, but as with all of these worthy goals, the devil is in the details and how do we fund it? $450 million, even in a $20 billion budget, is a big chunk of change. Anyway, so that sort of ties into a lot of the bills we've been seeing this session in Finance that would, in effect, help to fund some of these new programs with increased taxes, be they increased property taxes for towns, depending on the amount of affordable housing they had, the value of their homes. Senator Looney's 1% statewide property tax would be levied on any residential property with an assessed value of over $300,000. As we know, in Connecticut, it doesn't take long for houses to qualify for that, particularly in, you know, towns like ours. And commercial properties have no bottom level, so it would be a 1% property tax on the total value of any commercial property, which could be a significant chunk of change. There's also a bill which was heard both in Finance and in Planning and Development that would levy an increased property tax rate on towns depending on the percentage of affordable housing they had. There were two bills that came before us that would, in effect, had probably eight or 10 different ways to increase taxes on the residents of Connecticut. I will say that Governor Lamont has been adamant in his refusal to increase taxes, so I think it's gonna be an interesting dynamic to see how this plays out. You know, my Republican Caucus feels that before we start levying increased taxes on the citizens of Connecticut, we better look extraordinarily hard at how we're spending the money we get in, and look at some real, some real spending reform, whether we're looking at, you know, those legacy pension costs, whether we're looking at the way we build our roads and bridges. There are all sorts of issues that need to be addressed. And the governor seems to me at the moment more inclined to favor us in terms of the taxation issue. He has built into his budget some new revenue streams, revenue from sports gaming. There's something called the Transportation Climate Initiative, which is, in effect, a bill on a new gas tax that we would join in with the number of states, I think currently Massachusetts, Rhode Island, and the District of Columbia in it, that could result in anywhere, depending on whom you believe, between five and 37 cents on a gallon of gasoline. Thirty-five percent of the proceeds from this would have to go to remedying environmental and energy issues in underserved communities. So they could be anything from building bike paths in New Haven to electric buses in Bridgeport. Also built into his budget is the legalization of retail marijuana. So there are lots of moving parts. There are lots of interesting proposals out there. The Senate is in session. One of the bills that was passed unanimously, I think, in both the House and the Senate, would give the legislature a say in how the governor spends the federal tax recovery dollars, because currently we have no say in how that money is dispensed. Will be, the House is going in tomorrow, and we'll be voting on some of the, in fact, the zoning Governor's Executive Order that allowed restaurants to operate outdoors and continue some of those policies. And will also be a bill that would extend the Governor's executive authority through May 20th. So I've rabbitied on like crazy, but that's basically what's going on, and there's a lot. And it's all very strange and difficult and frustrating, and it all has to be done remotely. The normal interchanges, exchanges that we would have, be it with constituents here or the press or lobbyists or one another, are just not happening, apart from those rare days when we're in session. So that's where we are. Thank you for listening to my monologue. And I don't know if you can, I forget the rules, guys. It's been a while since I've sat on the Board of Selectmen, so if you have any questions, I'll take them. If not, I will defer to our amazing senator, and he can fill you in on his stuff, and I'll get back to my public hearing.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you, Holly. I know you do have to go to that public hearing that you've been on all day and you'll be on all night, but it's important that you're there. So I'll break for questions now, very specific to what you asked, and then we'll take a long, a little bit longer time with Senator Farmica as you depart and go back to your, the business at hand. So are there any questions for Holly this evening?
Holly, are you involved at all with the bill on solar energy?
Which one, Roseanne?
The one that would let, change the requirements and lessen the acreage required for solar parks, or, yeah.
Is that, unless it came through Energy, I'm not. It may be in Planning and Development, and Paul might be able to enlighten that, but I don't believe we did anything with regard to solar energy that lessened the amount of land. And this good senator can correct me, because he's the ranking on Energy, so.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We'll hold Paul's response until, if there are any other questions for Holly, from the Board of Selectmen, obviously. If not, Holly, if you can listen with both ears to different things, you're welcome to stay on. You're very talented. I don't know how much you've built that.
My multitasking, yeah.
So we thank you for the hard work that you're doing. This is the second year that you both have had to deal with Zoom meetings and really stressful times up there to try to pass appropriate legislation in very difficult times.
And obviously, if any of you come up, you know, think of something afterwards that you wanna ask me, you know where to find me, and, you know, my virtual door is always open, and my real door is always open too, if you've been vaccinated, so.
We know. Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
See you in church. Senator, Senator Farmica, so good. Again, you're on the same call or same, same, same public hearing, is, am I right?
Holly is the ranking member, so she's, you know, she's up there with all the questions and everything, and I just listen on this committee. I'm ranking on Energy and Executive Nominations, so I'm, I do that as well as my new role as Deputy Leader of the Republican Party, so, Republican Senate. So just to follow up, the TCI initiative that Holly spoke about, the interesting point about that is some years ago, we instituted a lockbox for transportation funds that had to, you know, had to be put in there. So it's interesting how this bill will, will react to that lockbox. It's not been discussed yet. This bill is designed to really promote the use of electric vehicle infrastructure and also to promote the use of electric vehicles. And its idea is to try to lessen the use of fossil fuels to the point where some people are talking about picking a point in time and eliminating, you know, gas engines. So, you know, it's a, it's a very environmentally focused initiative. The issues that we have, some of us with this is, a lot of the air in this country moves west to east, and, you know, a lot of the things that happened in our air happen to benefit the Atlantic Ocean, and a lot of the things that happened in Ohio and Pennsylvania, you know, end up impacting New York and Connecticut and Rhode Island. So we need to have really a federal discussion on this and not just individual states here and there to talk about that. So that will be an ongoing conversation, especially with the cost. We passed a modification of the use of force language in the Police Accountability Bill that was passed last fall. That happened yesterday in a very bipartisan manner. It lessened some of the opportunities there for police use of force, and also allowed more time for training, because there was training required by the 1st of April, which was just never gonna happen. Gaming Holly spoke about, that's gonna be very good for the five and six-numbered tech, job producers in the state, being the two resort casinos. And it will also generate revenue for, for the state and provide money for problem gambling. Mostly, we've been dealing with appointments of commissioners and judges as we work remotely through the committee process, but we are meeting up there in the Capitol for voting, and the House can vote from their offices, because they have that capability with the, with their scoreboard. Our scoreboard is in construction, and so we're still in the Senate walking in there, but it's very controlled and very social distance. To Roseanne's point about Energy, I don't believe that bill came before the Energy Committee. It may have gone before Environment. We are talking in the Energy Committee about writing a discrepancy in the solar property tax law, where anything over 5 megawatts gets, under 5 megawatts gets exempt from property tax. So if you have a 5 or 6-megawatt array, people were making it 2, 3 megawatts, so therefore avoiding the property tax. And so we corrected that inequity, and they would be now required to pay property tax to the communities in which they're in if they're generating a total amount of electricity as, as a unit. The Connecticut Port Authority continues to make news. You know, we're trying to focus on, you know, the real game there, which is the development of offshore wind as a, the next generation of energy generation that will offset some of the waning generation opportunities that are happening now. One only has to look back five years or so to see the growth in renewables. We've stabilized our baseload in Millstone, but as fossil fuels are becoming less in favor, we're gonna need more renewables. They are intermittent sources, which means they produce when the wind blows or the sun shines. So we've also got a bill in on battery storage that would be available for incentivizing battery storage, both on a grid-scale basis or in homeownership. We're working on variable rate contracts for electric users, ratepayers, and ratepayer transparency for bills, working on Eversource, making sure that they are now moving forward in a, in an opportunity for their rate-making capabilities, that they have to be performance-based, which is how, you know, all of us are judged, both as elected officials and as people working, and, you know, we're based on performance. So these purists came out, and you may have noticed with a, with a finding that said that the Eversource really dropped the ball during that tropical storm last summer. So hopefully, we're moving in the right direction and reining them in and focusing a new, you know, kind of a new direction for the utilities. In terms of the American Rescue Plan, there's a lot of money that's coming over the next few years. There is a lot of restrictions on what can be spent, and there's also some opportunities. We're trying to make sure that the state, and as part of that bill that happened yesterday, which gave the legislature and the Appropriations Committee some control over that spending, was that we don't use one-time revenues for operation costs, because that leaves a hole in future revenue years. So, you know, we're looking at things in ways to try to maximize the use of these funds, and I'm sure you have the list of those opportunities that the fund can be used for, if not, we can send it. So, you know, that's kind of a five-minute overview. Holly touched on the Planning and Development and the finance taxes. There are a large number of taxes that are being proposed. One that was not mentioned was a mileage tax on trucks that go through Connecticut, which is really a tax on products and that are delivered by trucks. So that's gonna be interesting. And also, in the Governor's Budget, there's a $75 million tax on insurance companies' premiums, which will be, again, trickled down to, you know, to the user. So we're offering alternatives to try to find a better way to some of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Maybe a few questions. I'll start. Your, that electric vehicle infrastructure build-out, did you call that the TCI initiative?
TCI, yes.
Okay. If, if they're very focused on the electric vehicle in the future, and they should, I mean, companies like Audi slash VW are gonna be out of the combustible, combustible engine in a matter of five years or less, and all these other companies. Right now, you can't buy a Tesla in the state of Connecticut. Is that part of, is there something being done about that?
There is a, there is a bill that is being proposed to allow Tesla the opportunity to sell vehicles in Connecticut. As you know, the Auto Dealers Association are against that. They provide a lot of jobs, and they're, they're against it because they believe it's a way around the franchise law that governs their opportunity. So Tesla does not, their business model is not that way. So I think of all the years I've been up there, that bill has been floating around. Now that Tesla is gaining more strength as a company, and I think this might be the year that that will go through, whether people like that or not.
Right, right. Thank you. I just, I knew that, I thought there may be something up there regarding that. Other questions from the Board of Selectmen?
Yes, I do. Paul, what do you think these chances are of this bill advancing regarding the affordable housing? Because I don't think that there are any more than two towns in the entire state that achieve the 10% mark.
The bill that I think you're referring to is the tax on, on property if towns do not achieve the 10%.
Right, yes.
It's a sliding scale. If you're at 6% residential, affordable housing, the tax on the homes directly paid to the state would be 1.5% or something like that, or 1.5 mil. So I, I'm hopeful it's not gonna go through at all. I don't, I'm hopeful the mansion tax, quote-unquote, which is a 1 mil rate that people will pay on houses valued, I think at $400,000, assessed at $320,000, which are clearly not mansions in this day and age. But those two initiatives are part of a conversation that Senator Looney, I think I give him credit for, is to trying to have an improvement in the pilot program, pilot being payment in lieu of tax.
Right.
That, that has never been fully funded, and he's looking for ways to generate it. So what this, these two proposals would do would be to take it from towns, you know, that have higher grant lists and send it to, to the cities and to try to balance that out. I think it's a worthy conversation. I don't think it's the right way to go about it.
Well, I have done some, some research on the $3,000, $300,000 limit. That's almost a third of the homes in this town that are right at the $300,000 mark or above. I think that would be, no pun intended, but very taxing on people in this town. And we run, thanks to your efforts and Mark's and the previous Boards of Selectmen, finance, we run a pretty tight ship and manage our funds well. And I, in a way, I see this as penalizing towns who have been spending their money wisely and being sure to watch the dollars. And when you read some of the projects that are going on in some of the other locales, let's just say, perhaps not quite as careful with the dollars. So I think that that could have a real impact on our town. And I'm wondering if a letter came from the Board of Selectmen to you and Holly, if that would add some, some strength to your position. We know, we haven't done this in the past, but maybe it's time for us as towns to start speaking up and, you know, giving you, giving our elected officials some support.
Well, that certainly would be welcome, and I would be delighted to share that, you know, with people. It may, it may also benefit to send a copy of that letter to the Council of Governments and maybe encourage more communities to, you know, to, to voice their displeasure and both, you know, with their elected representatives and with their councils of government, because it's, you know, it's, it's, it's money that's going into a pot that, you know, would be moved somewhere, and it just added, just added stress on people at a time when we, when, you know, people are coming out of a year-long pandemic. Some people are still struggling with jobs and income, and businesses have been closed and lost, and, you know, this would be on all commercial. What, that 1 mil on, for example, you know, what's the largest, you know, company in the area, right? Is it Electric Boat or Pfizer, or, you know, what are, what are those gonna, what are those gonna do? And plus all of the residents. So it's a very difficult time to impose some of these things, but there's a lot of talk about.
Well, I, I agree, because I think that we're already known as a state that has high business taxes. And I don't think this is gonna be very helpful for that image as far as trying to attract some of new businesses into the state.
Well, and you know, Roseanne, to your point, you're always spot-on with these things. It's a message that we send, and if we want businesses to come into our state and someone is, you know, in, in another state looking to try to come to Connecticut for its beauty and its resources and its, and the people that we have, we have a great workforce. You know, they might think twice if, if these bills are being proposed, and even if they don't pass, it's the message that's being sent, and it's gonna detract from people moving to our state. So we need more people moving in than moving out. We've seen some influx with the pandemic driving people from New York to Connecticut, because certainly our beautiful homes are less expensive than, you know, apartments in the city, and people are looking for relief. But that's, you know, that's gonna be over soon, and, you know, we'll see what happens after that. But it's definitely a point well taken, Roseanne.
And I just have one more question. Well, I actually have a lot of questions, but I'm gonna yield the floor. But on the Police Accountability Bill, you mentioned one potential change in that bill. Is there, are there any other parts of that bill that might affect our town?
The only, you know, the other part was the liability, you know, against the officers. So, you know, I don't think that's going to be changed. The training, which needs to be in there, has, has remained intact. This bill just allows for that opportunity for training to, to happen. It was, it was a little bit tight on the timeframe.
I see. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks for saying that. Yes?
Paul, just a follow-up question. So you talked about one of the bills with affordable housing. There's a second one to try to, to take away local control of zoning regarding affordable housing, is that correct?
In Planning and Development, they wanna, they wanna remove local zoning control, remove public hearings from, from local communities, and just being able to put large multifamily housing anywhere within, within half a mile of a transportation center. Also, they're taking, they're proposing to take the word "character" out of any zoning consideration. As you know, "character" has been used to try to protect communities from sprawl and from overcrowding and from even commercialism. You know, we have the, many communities don't allow things such as the golden arches, you know, they're to try to keep the character. But this bill would, would strip that out if they believe it comes from desegregate Connecticut, and they believe that, that the local zoning in small towns is keeping people of color out of the community, and by taking over zoning from, you know, from the state's perspective, they think it's gonna open up that opportunity to, to more diversity in, in homes. So it's, it's very troubling for a lot of small towns.
Including onwards.
From all sides.
Talking about three zoning chairmen, right there, right in a row. Yeah, and obviously, the Affordable Housing Bill that we work under now, 8-30G, has its flaws, no doubt. One that comes to mind is, it expires. After 30 years of an affordable housing unit being present, the affordable housing goes away. So a town is always losing stuff out the back door as it's trying to promote affordable housing. And of course, towns don't build affordable housing. Developers do. And if a developer doesn't come and knock on your door and say, "We wanna build this", you can't, you don't have a plan to approve or deny. So, you know, the towns are at a disadvantage, and if they don't meet that 10% threshold, and its citizens are taxed, it's, it would make no sense.
One of the things that we worked on, Roseanne, you'll remember, were the incentive housing zones that we, I think, passed through, located downtown.
Yeah.
Really, the direction we should be going is to say to communities, "Where do you want this development? Where is best for the development?", and we'll provide opportunities to incentivize those developments. And I think, you know, that's a way that, that we have to go forward. But this is a, it's a much more radical step, and, you know, it's creating quite a stir in, in the community, especially, you know, in the southwest portion of our state.
Of course.
It's, it has the potential to really lower property values and change, change what communities look like. Two other resolutions quickly, and I'm sorry to take up a lot of your time, but Resolution, House Resolution 58 and 59 deal with new voting requirements. One, 58, I believe, is the change to allow no-excuse absentee balloting. And then the other is early voting initiative, 59. Early voting was voted on last session and had to, had to have a 3/4 majority to passage to be put on the ballot for '21, so it was the session year before '21. It only passed by a simple majority, so it was not able to be put on the ballot. by a simple majority, it will be on the ballot for the 2022 state election, which would allow opportunities for early voting. And then the legislature would have to decide on the mechanisms for those early voting. I mention that because H R one was, I believe, just passed out of the House of Representatives in Washington, which is an.
Yes, it was. Yep.
An eight-hundred-page omnibus voting bill. And one of the, one of the stipulations in that bill is that the communities would have to provide 15 days of early voting. They would have to keep those early voting opportunities open for, I believe it's nine or 10 hours a day staffed. And, you know, when I questioned, I was on a forum with Congressman Hines with the League of Women Voters, and I asked them, what communities like Basra and Salem and even East Lime and Sprague, how could they afford to even staff those things and and have the people to be there for 15? So there's a lot of problematic discussions that are happening in parallel, but not together. So the federal bill would take a lot of the powers away from the state, and they would be passing one set of regulations while the state's looking to pass another. The absentee ballot, no excuse absentee ballot, this is the first vote, so if it passes by three-fourths majority, it will go on the ballots for 2022. Again, if it passes by a simple majority or less than three-fourths, it has to go a second time. But, you know, I believe 80% of the people in the state want no excuse absentee balloting, and I expect that both of those initiatives will pass this year. So we'll see some change on the state level if the, at least offered to the public in the balloting of the 2022 election. But I don't know about H R one. Roseanne, you may have looked at it a little deeper than I have, but.
I have been following it.
Yeah.
Well, I think there, I think there are a lot of glitches there and a number of things that even for a small town such as us would be difficult to do. You know, our elections run very smoothly. We pay our election workers. Some, some places across the country do not pay, so they rely on volunteers. And I think, I think this would really increase the the amount of money that a local election would cost, and I could only imagine what it would do in the cities.
Yeah, quite a bit of changes. So it's something that we're going to have to watch.
Thank you, Paul. Are there any other questions? And if not, I thank you. You have a busy schedule, busiest guy I know. Please keep up the good work and appreciate all your, your advice. We'll take your, your suggestion or Roseanne's suggestion of a letter to your office and to the COG seriously. And I'll get together with you on that to get the right words.
If people are, people are watching out there, then, you know, senatorsfromica.com if they want to go on there and, you know, ask any questions or get me information or get me just simply their opinion on, on legislation that, you know, may have happened or is being considered. I'm happy to get back in touch. And thank you for the opportunity to visit with you once again. I miss, I miss that room. That was a favorite part of my life, working with all of you closely down there, making sure we, we did the best for the people in the best small town in Connecticut, so.
You get that right.
I think, I think it would be helpful for us, Paul, if you could kind of give us a heads up on some of the bills in particular that would be helpful for you to be able to say, you know, this is, this is signed unanimously by the Board of Selectmen. So if you could give us a heads up on some of the, a couple of the bills that would, you know, help reinforce your position if we agree with it. But I think, I think, I think we need, I think, I think we need to be a little more proactive in supporting both you and Holly.
Well, thank you very much. I'll send, I'll send some things out and maybe if Mark can get me a copy of all of your emails, I'll do a group email. If not, we can, we can, I'll just send it to the first selectman and he can distribute it, whatever, whatever you find easy.
And I'll get the details from Kim along the way as well. So thank, thank you, Paul, for your time today.
Thank you, Paul. Good to see you. Thanks very much. Good to see you, Dan.
All right. You take care. Really good discussion. Next on our agenda is, is the discussion, and it says possible action. The only action would be the process of which we take. We're not here to approve any spending tonight. It was, but the discussion and possible action of COVID American Rescue Relief Fund money. It has been advised that we don't do any appropriations until we have the money in hand. There's still some wrangling going on, and the money does have to go through the state. And although they're not, they're not supposed to take a cut or vig from that, things can happen. And also, there's still definitions being made, as you heard, from, I think both of them mentioned it, of of what exactly we can spend it on and what the criteria is. Because at the end of the day, there's going to have to be an accounting of what we spent the money on. So unlike LOSEF, where we are, we tell the state what we're spending the money on, and then they give us the money, or like a grant with what we qualify for. This is an interpretation and then go and make sure that we spent it correctly. It's going to be pretty broad and it's going to be pretty loose. It is not supposed to be used for operations, but, but, but for capital projects, a lot of recreation, water, sewer, IT specifically, and in other things that would not, typically not build an operation account, like if we were to hire somebody for a specific project. And I have one in mind that we'll go over, that those contracts have to be for a two-year period of time because that money's running out and we can't obligate the taxpayers beyond the American Rescue money. It should not be our intention. So that said, I thought, and thank you for, for agreeing to meet tonight to just to start talking about this in, in an open setting. We're not doing anything behind closed doors, but just to talk about it and how we might go about this. If we were given the $900,000 out of the 1.8 million that has been reported that we'll receive, we'll receive $900,000 next year at this time, and we'll receive $900,000 in about, about seventy, seventy-five days from now. There's also county money, and that accounting has still not come out. And that kind of accounting is significant. It probably, if they do it right and take the 50, I think it's $52 million, and they divide it per capita, we should be getting $3.6 million divided by two this year and then the other half next year. So 1.8 plus 900,000, so $2.7 million this year and next year. It must be spent by the end of 2024. So that's all I know or I can remember about this, but you can ask me questions and then we can kind of go through lists and priorities. I, I have a thought in mind and how I can envision this, this taking place. I know Roseanne had also brought that up. But, but, but tell me what's on your mind before we kind of get into the, the lists. Is there anything out there? Any questions about the money? Any, any concern? Any thoughts?
Well, if I may.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, the, it really seems that the malls are, are dying. And Main Street is back. I think that's one of the offshoots of one, of COVID. People have changed the way they shop and the way they think. They don't want to order everything from Amazon. They like to go into a store, but they don't want to go to a mall. And, you know, we had that study, what was it, the Sherret years ago, and developing Main Street. I, I think we have to refocus, one of the things if we could, on Main Street and make it a venue for walking down the street and and try to have a collection of shops that would mimic a mall that's all in one, in one line and and look, look at parking and sidewalks. And what do we do with the, what will be the old police station? How do we incorporate that in, in, into the, into the picture? Just some broad thoughts.
I agree. Other broad thoughts rather than specific?
Yeah, we had had some discussions about allowing different members of the public come before us with ideas, thoughts. It's, you know, they're not applying for a grant, but at least we could hear what their thoughts are for how the money should be invested in the community as well, besides just ours as a board.
Absolutely. The more opinions, the better as far as brainstorming goes and throwing ideas into the pot. It'll be our responsibility to take the, those priorities out of the pot and, or at least all of the ideas, but put them in a certain priority. But because you, you know, there is a limit, right? And then also there are parameters and what we can spend it on, but.
Yeah, I, I think, Mark, I think you, you mentioned the projects, and I'll let you get into that later, but I think we have a couple that would enhance the Main Street area. But here again, not just Main Street, because we have businesses at the north end of town too that could benefit from possibly looking into a little bit of an expansion of the Darrell Pond area. Take into consideration that 200 acres of that is in conservation use for perpetuity anyway. But we have some interest by some organizations in expanding up there. And we have already approved, looked at dinghy docks, either at the end of Smith Street or Grand Avenue or somewhere in that area. And the kayak, an area to launch kayaks with handicapped access as well down by Cheney Park. Those would enhance, I think, that Main Street flavor. People could bring a, you know, dinghy in, something like that, use our shops on Main Street when the weather's nice. Those are things that we have already identified as a need and so forth. But beyond that, I think Paul made a really good point. Invite people to come to us. First of all, we need to let people know specifically what we cover for this. I think once people understand, oh, this is covered by it or no, it's not. Then come before us, Samuel Smith House, Brookside Farms, they may have be able to identify some needs, but come to us, tell us what their needs are and what their request is. Same thing with Care and Share and even Main Street. Before we say, here's a block of money for you, okay, come to us with a proposal. I, I think outside of a couple maybe projects that, you know, we might all be able to agree on, let's ask people, once we can identify what's covered by this, to come to us with a request or to bring something that they think is worthy of attention.
Thank you, Kevin. If you can go through that list, I've gotten some feedback from all of you. And you mentioned a lot of them there, Kevin. Here's my thought, is we have some priority and short-term needs right now. Things that we should address immediately. And then there's longer term, let's have a conversation, what's the priority? What's the need? You know, when you mentioned Samuel Smith House, it triggered my head, I wrote it down. We should have that discussion. I mean, that's tourism, that's history, that's outdoor activity for the most part because the ground's there and, and we're struggling to finish that project, and it's a capital project. It'd be great to be able to finish that. And then you have a legitimate safe, because in the past it wasn't safe to go inside that building, a safe historical tourist spot that would attract people to our downtown. But I want to, I want to go back. There are immediate needs. There are immediate needs, and then there's maybe intermediate needs, and then there's more long-term planning needs. And the immediate needs are Niantic Main Street, they have not been able to fundraise for going on two years now. We just announced we're, we're not going to have Celebrate East Line this year, again, the second year in a row. We, we need to attract people to our Main Street so our small businesses can survive, to Dan's point, and I could totally agree with you. When you talk to the shop owners over at the Mystic Villages, and we all know that there's a shop owner over, a couple of shop owners over there that are from East Line and friends of ours, they are having banner years. So in the face of Amazon, people do want to come together in a community in, in, maybe an outdoor setting that's safe, like, like the Mystic Shops. And like downtown, there's shops downtown that are, they're scooping it up and they're doing okay. But they, they have taken it on the chin and they are still, they're still paying back all that debt that they incurred during, during the pandemic when they were closed and they still had to pay their bills. So this is immediate needs. Care and Share, the Shoreline Soup Kitchen and Pantry that works out of St. John's. Care and Share also has not just the food, but they also do rent assist or heating oil assist or one-time help you with the down payment assist. We may want to consider a separate funding for that. And the Niantic Boardwalk, I, I, I mean, the Niantic Main Street Group. So taking care of our people, especially those who are food needy and maybe that their checking accounts are a little low right now and they're trying to change apartments and they don't have down payment money, there'll be a lot of rent assists, there'll be a lot of food assists, there'll be a lot of things available through this American Rescue Plan, through the government, that we do not need to take care of necessarily. But we might want to be there as a safety net or as an initial, here's a little bit, now go, go apply for the, for the big, you know, for the, through the federal government or through the state, probably state social services will handle that. But those are immediate needs, is taking care of the people and taking care of our businesses. That's how I see it. And then there's intermediate needs, such as we have opportunities to, to build some recreation centers outdoors, enhance outdoor activities, because again, that will be a direct line to, to COVID and possible long-term pandemic where we're encouraging people to be outside. We've done a good job as a town. We have walking trails, we have the band show, we have the boardwalk. But, but, you know, that we have talked about Darrell Pond, the Parks and Rec is very eager to get started with a project up there for a dog park, a golf, a disc golf, an enhanced trail system up there. And we need parking. Right now, there's a parking available for about 10 cars. And as you go, Mostery Road cannot support any on-street parking because it's so narrow. We should consider making Mostery Road a one-way road and also looking into about $100,000 would add a, a dog park, disc golf and, and, and enhanced trail system, but 150 with a 40-car parking lot. And that's something we can get started on this summer. Doesn't have to be immediate, we got to get the money in hand, but it's to get started with. Lastly.
I don't, I don't recall that the Board of Selectmen ever voted on this to turn this over to Parks and Rec.
Of course. No, we haven't voted on it, but it is town land. So it is town land that we bring to advance. And we can talk about that, Roseanne, absolutely. But the Denny Dock DEEP permit and the kayak handicap launch that was all, that had been planned and permitted runs out this coming December. So it might be something that we move up into an immediate focus in that would be nice to get that thing going so that we do not have to reapply for permitting or take our chances with an extension with the DEEP. We have a permit, we're ready to go, we haven't had the financing. We were hoping to get another steep grant, and the steep grant funding dried up a couple of years ago. So there's, I, I have a long list of things. I just, I, I was putting things into categories of immediate, which is help people, help businesses, and then recreation, which is enhancements to the town. And then there's a whole laundry list of things we can talk about that would enhance our town and, and shore up our water system, our sewer system, our IT system as well. Thoughts, comments?
Mark, just, you know, I, I agree on those immediate needs. Some of those organizations you need, you mentioned, I think we need, before we promise any money, we need to hear from them, see what they're.
Um, I think we need, before we promise any money, we need to hear from them, see what their needs are. Um, because we just, we can't put a dollar on it. We got to find out. And and also what 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 they want to do with it, right? Um, but is it just backfilling um from the last year or does not Main Street have new ideas? So I I want to hear that before we promise any any allocation there. Um, um, the immediate needs, yes, I did the kayak dinghy dock. I think those are all great. Those were approved. Those were approved by Harbor Management back when I was uh executive at us. Those date back, those are have engineered plans, those should be ready to go.
They are ready.
So um, I like that. Um, recreation activities, there's a lot of needs in this town. Um, there's uh, you know, especially in this pandemic, the kids, kids in this town really took it on the chin. Um, so I'm I'm definitely in favor of looking at that. Um, I know Betts Park could use some lights down there um at the ball fields. There's um some some other things that are in our SIP. I think we should look at our our capital improvement plan. I mean, we already have a plan right in front of us. Maybe we could speed some of these things up. We won't need to, uh, we could remove it from the capital plan um for future expenditures. So I think we should look at our capital approval plan carefully. Um, look at your next two years, what we're two or three years, what we're thinking of uh considering expending money for capital improvements. Um, sidewalks, I really think we need to have a discussion on sidewalks. Um, we're long overdue for improving our sidewalk system in this town. I know some of it's going to be put on hold because we're waiting for the one sixty one corridor study. Um, but there are other areas where sidewalks aren't connected. Um, West Main Street, the sidewalk stops pretty abruptly. Um, and I know we have a plan already, so the good news is we have a plan already. Um, a lot of it's in uh our plan of conservation development, it's been kind of documented in there. And we have our capital approval plan, so I think we need to look at those things. Um, but I agree, I want to hear from the public and I want to hear from the organizations of of their needs. Um, and there are other, um, you know, COVID took a toll on domestic abuse and um mental health. So I wouldn't mind hearing from some of the organizations in town on that, um, because they really got impacted and I know that they probably could do some stuff too, so.
I failed to bring that up. I think that's an immediate need, too, is the mental part of this, mental health and wellness and mentoring. This board, I think intact, um, a couple of years ago approved the the um youth services adding a um uh social worker to their staff. Most towns, the 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 youth services have social workers or therapists. Um, and um, there is a proposal um submitted by Dave Putnam saying, well, he just resurrected what he already gave us. And we already approved, it was the Board of Finance that that uh that uh had to take it out of the budget in that particular year. That was a couple of years ago. But there is a proposal, just a two year plan, not adding to the operation, but a two year contract with someone to come in and make sure we have support, not just for the kids who will be supported through the schools and they have a plan through the summer as well, but support citizens. You know, not everybody, you know, there's a lot of mental issues out there, a lot of struggle out there um beyond eighteen years old. And we need to have something there for them. And this would be a great opportunity to put one or two people on. So thanks for bringing that up, Mark. I I kind of passed over it when I was ticking it off. That's an immediate need. That's like this summer or as soon as possible, we should be putting people on and making that available to for our citizens. It's a good point. Other comments?
I had suggested that we perhaps use a format like we do when we're approving the budget and that we get a representative, not necessarily the chair, but a representative from each board and commission to come in and talk with us about what they see as some of the needs for their commission. And many of those, many of the commissions are the things that we've talked about, such as sidewalks, that would come under zoning. You know, let's hear from, so I think these are people, as I said before, that have already been elected or appointed. Uh, and it wouldn't be overwhelming if we had one person from each board and commission selected by that board. And as I said, it might be the chair, it might not be. And uh to see what they see as some priorities in order to carry out their mission.
I agree. And um, and certainly we put that in the long term category where we would take some time and and talk to commissioners. It's tough for anybody to come in and speak on behalf of the entire commission. You know, there's never unanimous opinions, um, so that's difficult. Certainly, department heads should join those people if nothing else.
Yes.
But I agree with you, Roseanne. I think we should, you know, there there might be a couple gems hidden away. So by all means, we should talk to as many people as possible and have uh have that open public discussion about about needs in the town, uh, needs in the next ten years that we could shorten that calendar down to a couple of years. Absolutely, absolutely.
Uh, a question for you, if you even know the answer to this yet. Right now, the Board of Ed has a separate pot in the uh in the Town Award. We have one point eight, they have roughly one point seven. If we got the uh the other amounts of money over the next two years, uh, you know, divided, would that be a pot that would be for the entire town, including the Board of Ed? Or would the Board of Ed also get another share of that too?
Um, they have their own, um, and they'll have a lot of money coming to them through other resources. They have a lot of money coming to them now that we don't have any part in. Um, the Escher, uh, this, like the summer program, I think the seven hundred thousand dollars coming to them um eh to put on their summer program as we heard. Yeah, that, um, I would, I, my opinion is the county money, if it comes our way, should be town resources because that benefits everybody. As we know, the the Board of Ed uh will get their chunk. Uh, they're they're about, I think they've acquired, they amassed an eight hundred thousand dollar debt as a result of COVID. This will take care of that. And then, of course, the second um half of that would be perhaps for some extra social workers or more costs going ongoing. Um, you know, when when all the kids are back in school, other things may be revealed that they're going to need as resources. So um, they'll they'll make that determination. You know, it can be in the operations budget as long as it's COVID related. So if they identify their need to put on three extra social workers just because they know kids are going to be struggling getting back into a routine or whatever's going on at home or whatever, and they make those two year contracts and they pay for this out of this COVID money, that's appropriate. Uh, they just can't add to the budget ongoing. Um, so I would I would guess that that would be something they would be focused on. I can't speak for them, though. I do have a meeting with them, I believe it's tomorrow, um, with the superintendent and the two finance directors to talk about just that. So if they if they express a need beyond the money that they've been promised and beyond all their other sources of revenue and we're sitting on that money, um, and it's about people and it's about mental health and it's about taking care of kids or teachers or whatever as a result of COVID, my vote would be to take care of our people. Um, so if if it goes through the Board of Ed and we take some money out of that, out of that money, so be it. Um, but I think this is a great opportunity for some capital projects to be accomplished um once we get past um taking care of our businesses, enhancing our Main Street, as Mr. Cunningham said, maybe finding opportunities to enhance Flanders Four Corners to make it a little bit more welcoming, maybe flower beds on all the four corners or something and and um um continuing continuing that split rail, um fencing and in the in the uh the fake gas lamps that go on two corners, maybe we make them on all four, whatever it is. Um, we we enhance Flanders, Flanders Four Corners is never going to be a pedestrian um location. We're going to get in a car, we're going to go from here to there, but it certainly could be a nice welcome back. And it's certainly we can enhance uh what's going on down there and I'd be all for it. Uh, but also enhancing Main Street. We'll we'll talk to Main Street about what they see as the vision. Yeah, they've been talking about art downtown, uh, maybe some statues, statue-esque kind of things um in the new Main Street Park off to the left and the right. They've been talking about um murals in the middle of um the crosswalks, which give people to slow down. Um, painted right on the pavement. Uh, there's there's ways you can slow down traffic. And when you when you uh do certain things in the pavements and signs and all that, so. Um, we'll we'll definitely bring them in.
Mark, I'd be interested in having a further discussion with Dave Putnam on youth services. Yes, it's bringing on staff, contracted staff. But our youth services provides a lot less than our neighboring towns do because of the because of the resources that we, the town, provide youth services. And they do a great job, like all of our department heads, with what they have, you know, at their disposal. But I'd be interested in seeing if Dave has other ideas in addition to, you know, just a psychologist, which he tried to get a year ago to see how he can enhance the programs he provides. And the same thing goes for the senior center. What enhancement could they benefit from to take care of that population of our town citizens?
That's right, that's right. We need to make sure that they're taken care of, too. There's a lot of lonely seniors out there that have been housebound for a long time um fearing this thing and and God bless them. And we're talking about IT initiatives with with seniors, too. Maybe having iPads available or special computers available that we can do a little bit more online um socialization. Um, this might, this might go on for a while or if this happens again, or someone's just bedridden coming off of a surgery or medication or whatever, and they can't get to the senior center if they could plug in. Um, absolutely, uh, taking care of the social part. Uh, but I like what you said about the youth services. When I was deputy for select, when I I went to the youth service meetings and um, that's when the the youth coalition started with the drug and alcohol and suicide prevention. And of course, Mr. Dagle, you're very, very involved with that. Um, I, we we need to probably direct some money specifically to that because that goes right in line with that mental health um thing. So um, and we know a lot of citizens, it doesn't have to be the youth uh are struggling with substance abuse coming out of this COVID. There's a whole lot of people um sitting on couches for a year and probably not doing the right thing. So um, we we absolutely want to start talking to that. And I think, again, if when you when you talk about an immediate need, it should be at the people. So it's it's food and it's 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 mental, uh, mental health. And 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 then we go to the businesses and making sure they survive and we care about them and putting people on the sidewalk. I don't want to go up to an owner of a business and give them a check for twenty thousand dollars. What I want to do is create and attract people on the sidewalk that will create the business and the, you know, that business will get that twenty thousand tenfold if we can bring people back down to Main Street. And they're already coming down, um, you know, it's beloved by many and not just in our town. We'll bring people back down with with way with with um creative ways and we'll let Main Street, uh, let us know what that what that might be.
And and the other suggestion I would have as a town department or youth services, when if they come in with multiple ideas, it'd be nice for them to provide what their priorities are so that we don't pick number four on their list because it's something we like, but it's not necessarily what they think their first need is.
Yeah. Yeah. Other comments, thoughts? What's going on in your head?
Uh, well, I'm thinking in terms of supporting some of the local businesses that uh maybe we could um develop a form, some kind of a form for them to uh send us what they uh what they need or what they would like if they had some funding. I noticed in reviewing the plan that uh also eligible would be purchasing uh any additional health or sanitation equipment that they would need, uh particularly regarding workers' safety and health. Um, so maybe if we more like, as you said, you don't want to give them over the counter five thousand dollars. But if we develop some kind of a form that they could fill out, stating what their need was and then then, of course, follow up with a presentation to us or to, you know, by a subcommittee. Um, that might be a way to get things rolling.
Sure. I absolutely, I I especially, you know, going out and getting a big supply. I got a big supply of PPE. It was, I mean, you know, uh, these face masks, um, I got about thirty of them in my front seat wrapped around the the gear shift and all that. We all do. We have them all over our houses and in our drawers and in our pants and but but way back when, we were clinging on to the one we had, uh, and they were tough to come by. And I I went out, used the ad hoc money, I think, and I went out and purchased a significant, it was a couple of cases, maybe twenty five hundred. Maybe it was five, it was five thousand um um face masks. And, you know, to make sure we had them and we and I did go up and down Main Street and give boxes out um to all the businesses, uh, not Main Street. When I say Main Street, I mean businesses in town. Um, and um, of course, well received because we didn't know what was going to happen uh as a result. We may want to stock up on that. We want to make, maybe want to make sure our first responders have plenty of stock and and build that.
I agree. I have a healthcare worker who comes in to help two or three times a week. The business that she works for, they get one mask a day and one set of PPE materials. That's it for the day. Uh, so I think that there are organizations out there that uh need need this kind of support and the the equipment, you know. I I was, I was horrified, you know, that this individual is going to different homes and one mask a day. It's ridiculous.
And they get a mouth and they, you know, if if they, and if they're treating a a client and there's a incident um and often there is with home health care, um, it might be soiled of one fashion or another and, you know, that they're going to wear that for the rest of the day. And Roseanne, I I have a a private box, uh, box of them. I'll I'll get them to you, okay? So go through Sandy, um, she's been out sick this week, but I'll I'll get you a, I'll get you a a box to give her.
No, I just use that as an example. I don't, I don't want a donation, but I'm just saying that um I think there's, I I agree with you that there's a need to make certain that these uh that that we continue with.
With babies and all that stuff, absolutely, absolutely. And make sure we have a stock. But also take care of those people taking care of us. So that's why I made that offer that I I can get her a box and and she can put it in her trunk and whenever she has an incident and needs a second one for the day, she'll have it there and it's the least we could do. Um, but uh, this is all good. This is all good. I don't think we should make any determination tonight. But I think um we were talking about maybe creating a process. So um, if if I don't hear any opposition to focusing in on Care and Share, the the St. John's Shoreline Soup Kitchen and Pantry um and maybe Niantic Main Street, those three groups and having them come in and talking to us about their losses during the pandemic and the growing need in our town and what they would, what how they would benefit if we would be able to give them funding.
I wouldn't just limit it to Main Street businesses. I limited it to any town businesses. North end of town, one sixty one corridor as well, too, because they've all been affected.
Sure. So there's a, there's a group called the Main Street, Niantic Main Street Group, Kevin, you know that. I'm not telling you anything. They're the org, they're the Chamber of Commerce in East Line and they don't stay on Main Street. They go right down Flanders Road in Flanders Four Corners. I'd like to talk to them as a group, to talk to them about what could, if we gave you X amount of money, what would you do with it? Uh, or let them tell us what they want.
Rather have them tell us because, you know, you know, it's certainly telling your rich, your rich uncle says, how much money do you want?
Right, of course.
How much do you need is the.
You you know what I mean. And and of course, we do it the right way. I'll also take and advise, uh, well, I will take um Roseanne's excellent suggestion of coming up with a form and advertising it out to all businesses because not all businesses belong to Niantic Main Street. It is a, it's a, it's a membership organization. Uh, and ask any organization if they would like assistance. And we don't know what that's going to look and feel like. And I think that might fit in with round two. Um, I'd like to get the immediate things out there, the food. I'd like to get the immediate things out there, the food, the Karen Share again does help people with rent and maybe heating assistance, immediate emergency funds. And, and the Main Street Group. And also, maybe if you don't mind, bringing Dave Putnam in. Because if he's going to start talking about how to enhance youth services going into the summer, it's almost April. So I'd like to get him in here to talk about youth services. Mr. Diggle's fine suggestion in talking about this extra social worker or two that might help us with the mental health part of it.
I think we might also want to hear from Dave about other summer programs. You know, I think, I think we all agree that once, once, once the warm weather hits, we're going to have a deluge. We already see this nice weekends with cars backed up all the way up Penn Avenue trying to get on, trying to get to the beaches. I think we might have to consider, we might want to consider some extra funding there for some extra lifeguards and things.
And, you know, the lifeguards, we might go into, in fact, one of the reasons we had to, had to cancel Celebrate East Line is because there is still a requirement that we, we reach a 50% capacity. You can't control the crowds at Celebrate East Line. And if canceled Sale Fest, and our concern was, well, when Sale Fest canceled, the next weekend being Celebrate East Line, people are going to just pour in because there is something finally going on in Southeastern Connecticut.
Right.
Control. But we do control the volume at our beaches. And what Dave struggled, struggled with last year is obviously gate attendance and security. Lifeguards, you know, will have 50% of the people on a beach, but, and he'll have that covered. But he does struggle with that. So to your point, I agree with you. He might need some extra funding, COVID money funding because of the upcoming season.
Yeah, exactly.
You should talk to him about that. Thank you for bringing that up. I think that's very wise. So I have Karen Share, Shoreline Soup Kitchen, Youth Services, and Dave Putnam, talking about Youth Services and Parks and Rec, and also Niantic Main Street. And I'd like to maybe invite them all to come in. We can start our meeting a little early on the, on the 7th of April. That's our first meeting. It's a Wednesday. We might have to start about an hour early, maybe 6:30.
That's too early for me. I can, I can do seven. I can do seven, but I couldn't do 6:30.
Okay. So immediate, we'll have a meeting immediately following then. We can also incorporate this into our meeting. It doesn't have to be run like the budgets where it's separate. We do have a little bit of a full plate that night, so I wanted to get started a little early. Let's, let's start at seven and we'll just push our meeting out a little bit. And I think we'll have these groups come in. We don't know. I mean, we won't be able to promise them any money because we won't have it in hand yet. But we can talk about the fact that we should be getting funding and this is what it should be used on for. Tell me, tell us your thoughts. And we will, I will obviously give them, I'll have discussions with them of what to expect and what we're expecting from them.
Mark, I wonder if it might be wise, as you mentioned, because I hadn't thought of this, that Niantic Main Street covers more than Main Street. Perhaps Niantic Main Street slash community, I don't know, what was the other phrase you used?
Well, Chamber of Commerce. Chamber of Commerce?
Like a Chamber of Commerce. Yeah. So it doesn't look like we're just centering on just Niantic Main Street. We understand what it means, but to the general public.
Okay. Yeah, I, I will, uh, business community is, is what I'll put. Niantic Main Street slash business community perhaps. I'm not sure if there's anyone who could speak other than Niantic Main Street. But we'll just, we'll at least start that discussion. We'll have that put together in a.
I think there's other business groups in town, like Elbow, or I think there are other organizations that regularly meet.
I don't know if Elbow is still active. I will inquire.
Or it's another name. I know.
No, Elbow is out there, but I'm not sure.
There still is one that meets. And only other thing, I hate to pile on, but I also, well, we talked about too, Senior Center, maybe Kathy Wilson. I think.
Absolutely.
I mean, I mean, I mentioned the kids taking it on the chin. So did the seniors. So, and I know they do, you know, they've probably had a lot of Meals on Wheels and such this year. So.
There's a lot there. Maybe we should break this into two meetings?
I was thinking, Mark.
I think so.
I was thinking of trying to everybody at once, maybe just one or two per meeting. Because again, it gives them a little bit more time to prepare for it. And we're not inundated with five or six different organizations coming in all at once. I, I think, you know, I know we have things we want to move fast, but we don't want to move really fast.
And we can, we're, we can't move fast anyway because, because we don't have the money. So, but we do want to set up our plan. And, you know, setting up a plan of immediate need, intermediate need and long range. And lots of good things on the long range. This is what I have. The Everbridge system that will form our citizens. We are applying for a grant for that, by the way. But if it doesn't come through, I think it's an immediate need. Well, I think it's a, a need that we should consider. Someone brought up turf fields. Someone brought up moving the communication center from the building it's in now, which is the dispatch center, and building a new tower, bringing all the equipment over to the new public safety building. Someone brought that up. The Morris Building needs upgrades. We have to do something about it. This would be a fine time to do that. Enhancements to Main Street, as Dan brought up. Enhancements to Flanders Four Corners, which I brought up. Brookside Farm and Samuel Smith House, especially the Samuel Smith House, which if we give them a shot of adrenaline, that thing will be done. It'll be, they'll be flying. So it'd be nice to see that. On top of all that, we also have to have discussions about water, sewer and IT. Very specific things in the bill that, that we should be considering. And we will consider that. Sidewalks and, and that's what I have for long term. And I think, well, the other thing was dam repair. We have three dams that are in desperate need to be repaired. The Darapon Dam, the Clark Road, the Clark Pond Dam and the Plant Stand Dam, the Plant Stand Dam. Needs a significant, yeah, I know. I said, that's what it says here. That needs significant work and to be rebuilt. And then we talked about all the recreational facilities. That'd be nice to, to get the money in hand and we can agree to some of these things. It'd be nice to see us give a shot on the arm to some of the recreation things. So, good discussion tonight. Any, any, any other feedback? We have some people we're going to bring in over the course of two meetings. I might ask you to consider a special meeting.
I think we should. I think we should. As I said the first night, that listening to the proposals sometimes. And then if we're going to have a regular meeting on top of that. And I think like we do with, with our budget hearings. You know, have four, three or four presentations and ask specific groups to come each time. So if somebody else said, we don't have a deluge, and then people get upset that they don't have their time.
Okay. I, we could do, we could do a couple in the front of next meeting. Well, the third, this is one of those months, marches, but we have five Wednesdays. This is the fourth Wednesday. Is there availability next Wednesday night? Tough on you, Paul. I saw your face.
Yep.
I think I have something planned, huh?
Yeah, and that's okay.
Yeah, and we got to give, if we're going to ask organizations come with us with material, a week is a short period of time to get everything together.
It isn't. And when you're talking to Karen Share, they know, they know their need. I wouldn't, I wouldn't put high level stuff out a week. I'd give them a couple. But I think, I think we could do that. If, but Paul, you're busy maybe?
Yeah, let me check. It'll take me a while. I need four passwords to get into my phone.
Top security.
Something just dropped off here.
I wouldn't mind giving the organization more than one week, so they can at least meet as a group.
All right, let me. Let me, um, let me schedule a couple of these groups to come in before our meeting on the 7th. So just 7 o'clock. We won't be there all night. It will be just two groups, 15 minutes each. And then we'll start our regular meeting. And then we'll have a special meeting, maybe the following week. And we can schedule when we, when we meet next. You know, the following week, of course, I have Board of Finance, but the 13th I have open. The 15th I have wide open. So maybe that Tuesday or Thursday, we can get together and probably put some substance to the rest of the people. Have Dave come in and talk at length about a lot of these things.
Well, Dave could certainly come, Dave could certainly come next week. He would be prepared. He knows what he wants. This commission's done a lot of work.
I'll reach out to some of these groups and see, see how long it will, I mean, I agree with you. But I don't know that Paul can make the 31st because he's only on his third password.
I, I think I'm okay. So, and Dave, I'd recommend though that he doesn't bring youth services and Parks and Recs at the same time. We should talk about the immediate needs first. And the Parks and Rec stuff can be with the other department heads. I hate bringing Dave and Forrest twice, but if we want to help on immediate needs, let's talk about helping feed people and taking care of the health of our citizens.
The 31st, is everybody else available? Say no, you're not. I know, I know Roseanne's good. I'm good. Kevin doesn't want to meet.
I think I can do it. I'll make sure I can. The 31st?
I mean, I, you know, I don't have anything else, but, you know, that's fine.
I, I, listen, I won't waste your time and I won't waste the organization's time. It's going to be somebody who's got it together. I don't think Niantic Main Street will have it together. I'm going to spring this on them and say, we need a presentation, but I'm going to give them several weeks to meet. I agree with you. Maybe, you know, Dave, Dave definitely has his hands wrapped around the youth service needs of that department. His part, part is, he has the numbers already for his Parks and Rec. Lifeguard stuff, but Paul's, to Paul's good advice, maybe he keeps that separate. We talk about all the recreation, dog parks and disc golfs and, and Parks and Rec needs for the beach needs later on.
Mark, if we're just going to meet just for, with, you know, not for Park and Rec, but for youth services, I think we should have a second one with Kath, maybe Kathy, talk about needs. So at least, we don't, we don't want to have a meeting for 20 minutes, right? If we're going to have, go out of our way.
So we're going to meet at seven. We're going to meet at seven. We'll talk to, we'll have enough discussion for at least 30 minutes and we'll start our meeting. The following week, I'll load it up and, and, oh, you're talking the 31st.
Well, if we're going to do the 31st, I'd like to hear what's, what's going on with Kathy because I'm sure she could probably speak to it, especially me.
I'll see if they're available. Of course, they work all day too. So let me see if they're available and I'll reach out to you guys and lock in the 31st or not. And I, you know, Karen Share and Soup Line, the Soup Kitchen, you know, they'll have their numbers. They'll very simply have their numbers of what their, their numbers fell and what they're going up. You know, donations falling because we all couldn't get together. I mean, how many Karen Share benefits do we go to a year? You know, this, you know, it's the cornhole tournament and all those other things that we do every year to, you know, and Karen Share is just always getting donations because of those things. And none of that happened this year. So let's find out where they're, where they fell. And, and then they'll also be able to report of the increased need, if there is any. And we'll talk to them. That has to be a simple, a simple conversation.
Yeah. If we focus on service organizations, both town service organizations and public on the first night, we'll get a, we'll get a good feel, I think.
It's going to be a very easy conversation. They're going to, they're going to know what they're, how, if they are down. Because people have been very generous during this time too, and very giving and very selfless. So let's, let's, let's have a conversation. And we can always have them back if they want to do some brainstorming later with your groups about what would happen if they got a $100,000 grant from the town? Would they be able to buy new refrigerators to keep perishables? You know, there's, they have capital needs too. Let's talk about that. Let's talk about the immediate needs and the capital needs. I'll bring them in. Let's meet on the 31st. Let's, if I can, if I can round up a significant meeting. Let's meet at 7 o'clock on the, on the 7th and then we'll go from there. Then we'll determine.
Mark, could you add, could you add to the list that you're keeping increased lighting for public areas?
Sure.
For safe, for safety purposes?
Tell me what you're thinking, increased lighting in public areas. I'm writing it down.
Yep.
But are there any areas specifically you're thinking about?
Senior Center.
Okay.
And library.
I would go for friends around that because lighting now and cameras, just so you get a better look at the hoodie that where you can't see anybody. So.
Yeah. We did enhance the lights there a couple of years ago. We redid that, that parking lot. So, but we don't light up the building. So let's, let's talk about that. Yeah, absolutely. It's on the list. And you, listen, I threw out a bunch of stuff, but do you, do you have anything else you want me to put on the long-term discussion list?
How about, because we talked about, you know, seniors, we talked about youth. What about the Legion and the Veterans, BFW? Do we have any veterans that might be in need? Might want to ask for just a little input from them. Have Pat Hughes, who's the head of the East Line Veterans Council, and Roy.
Brian Burridge would have his hand.
Burridge is the Veterans Rep. Ask them, is there any needs they have? I didn't even think of that till just now.
Okay. Yeah, great. We talked about bringing clergy in if there might be someone in their flocks in their communities, in their church communities that they know specifically is hurting. And we can go to that. I, I'm thinking broad and then we'll get more narrow. But, yeah.
And some of, some of these things might be quite personal. You might want to vet a little first, particularly if you're going to get into churches.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah. You know, and we want the money to stay here. They, they all have great missions. They all do things, wonderful things around the world. But we're interested in helping the citizens of East Line with this money, I would think. So, so that, you know, personal opinion, but I hope you all join in on that. So, anything else? Any other ideas? Lots of ideas here. Lots of lots. And we haven't even talked about water and sewer. We'll eventually bring them in. That really needs to be part of the discussion.
Mark, I did the water and sewer last night. I did mention this to them and told them that, you know, to have Ben and Brad start thinking about what to bring forward and, you know, to come with some specific press. So they have been alerted to this.
Great, great.
And police and fire eventually. Do they have a capital need or something that will better serve the town as well?
Yes, agree, agree. You know, I, I, part of this discussion, again, this is all going to come in two lumps, right? And I'm not sure this Board of Selectmen can tell the next Board of Selectmen what to spend the money on after next election.
Oh, yes, we can. We're, oh, yes, we can. We're going to get all our work done.
Well, we can spend our, we can spend our time, sure. And it's, you spend it purposefully and wisely and with, with, with great thought and care. But, you know, there's going to be a need at the Senior Center for space. And there's already a need at the library for space, especially as we don't huddle together anymore, but we need space, you know, six feet apart. And, you know, it's always been the plan to move some departments around in this town so that we can create more space in that, in that poorly designed, poorly designed building at the community center. So maybe creating some space over there by moving departments around. And now we will have raw municipal space we'll be able to move people into. So something we should consider if it's, you know, long term. It might even be next year. But something, should be on the list.
So maybe one of the things that we should all do. So, uh, maybe one of the things that we should all do, um, either for the, before the next meeting or the following meeting, is review the capital plan.
Yes.
So that's fresh in our minds. And, uh, maybe do a little bit of, uh, itemizing on that, from that list. That's something we've already had conversation about. And I think, Mark, you, I think, Mark, you mentioned, uh, possibly take, picking a couple of things from that, from that list and moving it up.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Especially the appropriate ones, like, you know, we, we gotta reseal the boardwalk. Um, and that needs to be resealed as soon as possible. And that's outdoor recreation activity. It got used significantly during the pandemic. Um, it's something we, we treasure, and it's something we should probably make sure we, I take care of. It's mu- it's, it could come out of this money. It would save the taxpayers seventy-five dollars. Um, you know, our property taxes. Of course, all this money is our money. All this money is taxpayer money. Uh, we, we'll never forget that. So, good discussion tonight, folks. Let me put some, uh, people together. I will try to communicate through this process to let you know where I'm at and who's coming and all that other stuff, okay? And by all means, send me an email. We're not supposed to group email, because that's against FOI rules, illegal meetings. But send me an email if you would, uh, if you have any other ideas, and I'll add them to the list. Okay?
Great.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing this precious time with, uh, each other. Yeah, Paul?
Mark, you know, a little, uh, public service announcement, um, with the Shoreline Soup Kitchen. Uh, every year, w- we do a pay it forward program at the Shack Restaurant for, in honor of our son's birthday, Brian. Uh, this year, we're expanding that to have a food drive with the Shack. So on Good Friday, four, two, I'll be down there with my truck, and we'd like to fill it up with donated food. And we'll also accept donations to Shoreline. This is not a Brian Dagle Foundation fundraiser. This is a, uh, East Lime Soup Kitchen, uh, at, at, at St. John's. So, um, that's, uh, that's what we're doing and, uh, appreciate, uh, having this format and anyone who, who watches this tape of the meeting, uh, will be down there. And hopefully we can get some food for the people in town that need it.
Paul, I'll bring my truck. Let's do two trucks.
Okay, thanks, Tim.
All right, uh, so Brian, if we want, sorry, Mark, if we want to, want to make a, uh, donation.
Yeah, if you make it, yeah, uh, you can make a donation, uh, and, um, we'll be there and I'll make sure. My wife said it was the East Lime Food Kitchen. I thought it was Shoreline at St. John's. Mark, do you know?
Sure, if I have, yes, it's called their, um, the Shoreline Soup Kitchen and Pantry. I have cut checks in the past in them for, under SSKP. And that's how they like the checks made out to. SSKP, Shoreline Soup Kitchen and Pantry, in, in that word, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
I, I thank you all for your attention. And, you know, again, one last thing, uh, before, uh, we, we actually have to call for.
Public comment.
We have a bit of an agenda. But one last point of discussion. I, my vision is we do this as a board, not create a task force, not have a subcommittee. But we all work together as a board, um, to, to hear the, the appeals and the proposals and then vote on them, and then move them to the Board of Finance for, um, approval. And, and in some cases, we'll need a town meeting. Uh, that's my vision. Uh, I'll be getting together with Anna, talking about this money and how it needs to be appropriated. But that, it will follow normal appropriations. Uh, it will be the Board of Selectmen that will decide the order, the priority and all that. And I'd like to do it together rather than as a subcommittee. And I, I'm, I'm, I'm very, very pleased that you're all enthused about this. And I think that's the right way of doing it. Okay? So with that, um, said, and without.
We've already, we've already had five one last things. Are we really having a last thing now?
I'm calling for public comment. Public comment. Would anyone like to speak to the, to the Board of Selectmen this evening? If so, you must unmute yourself and you must like jump up and down. We have a few people here and I'm just gonna give them a chance. Hearing, seeing none, Selectman's response. I don't think, well, Roseanne just made a response. Thank you very much for that, Roseanne. And, um, a motion to adjourn is next.
Don't move.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you all.
Discussion, good discussion.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.